Welcome to the 7:30 regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Vice Mayor Dolan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me as we come together in each of our own spiritual traditions to give thanks and ask for guidance as we meet in these chambers to look to the challenges facing our community. God of justice and mercy, thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the members of our community for which we serve. Thank you for the generosity and compassion of our community. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. We ask that our decisions reflect accuracy and impartiality as we consider the merits and ramifications of each item before us today. Guide us to be the leaders our citizens need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of all. Give each of us clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, and integrity. Let us be mindful of and express our gratitude for this extraordinary community in which we live, work, and play. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening I have a couple of recognitions, so I'm going to come down to the microphone. Thank you. First, we have a couple of proclamations. So I'm going to ask Elise Fontarelli to come on up for me because we are going to give a proclamation for Makers Month. Oh, bring the whole crew. Bring the whole crew. Yeah, come on. I'll tell you what, you all can come across here and stand. There we go. So for those who are wondering, you'll get to learn what Makers Month is. Whereas makers are a growing community of individuals with diverse skill sets and interests who create and market their unique products, sometimes using discarded, unused, or broken materials, and whereas this year marks the fourth anniversary of organized maker efforts in the city of Lynchburg, however, makers have been in existence for generations. And whereas from the spirit of the Craddock Terry Shoe Company that lives on in the hotel to the annual Bateau Festival that honors the trade of maker products and an appreciation for a former mode of transportation, makers of all ages and races are part of the foundation of this city. And whereas learning is acquiring and applying knowledge and skills in an effort to grow and develop, and making is a key component of learning for all ages, and whereas area high school makers show their pride with public art, college students work to solve global health and conservation issues, and do-it-yourself individuals create sophisticated devices and gadgets typically without supportive infrastructure. And whereas making and exploratory learning leads to innovation and improvement on both a personal and community-wide level that includes entrepreneurial makers that help boost our local economy and leave positive environmental impacts, and whereas sustainability, repair, and reuse are tenants of the maker movement that have positive fiscal and environmental impacts on this community, now therefore I, Trenae L. Tweedy, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, Virginia, do hereby declare the month of March 2020 Makers Month, and Lynchburg a nurturing ground for this growing community of creative and curious people. March 10, 2020. Trenae L. Tweedy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will give you a little bit of time to talk about Makers Month and vector space.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Tweedy. Thank you to all of our makers. Bonnie, you should get up here, too. Probably lots of you. So Lynchburg is a city of makers all over the place throughout all time. Vector Space has been here for four years, trying to bring them together into our internal community and then see what we can do to reach out to the external community. This month, we have a social media campaign, the LYH Makers Week will be coming up starting the 22nd, and on March 29th at Randolph College, we have Maker Fair, which is a celebration where we bring everyone, again, from students through professionals, together to make things, hands-on activities for kids and adults, and we invite you all to come out to that. And we appreciate the support that Lynchburg has for our makers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month 2020, and I have Jessica Arrington come on forward. Thank you. Yay, yay, yay. Thank you. And whereas regardless of who they are or the circumstances of their birth, every child has the right to safe, secure, and supportive environments free from abuse and neglect, and whereas during Child Abuse Prevention Month, Lynchburg citizens are reminded of the courage it takes to raise a child, and that all parents have the right to the support and knowledge that child rearing demands. And whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders, and whereas child abuse can disrupt early brain development and serious chronic stress can impair the development of nervous and immune systems, and whereas children are the foundation of a sustainable and prosperous society, and our prosperity as a city, Commonwealth and nation is built on a foundation of healthy child development, and whereas keeping children safe from abuse means playing an active role in their lives, having check-ins and teaching them the warning signs of abuse and how to protect themselves, and whereas child abuse prevention creates a more compassionate society, one which places a high on the welfare of children, and whereas creating communities where families can access an array of support and resources to address the social, emotional, and physical health of their children is the best to combat child abuse. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships between families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, who will be able to provide information on resources and support for children and their families in our community who need help. And whereas Lynchburg remains committed to sustaining safe, nurturing, and supportive environments for families raising children, and whereas wearing blue, the official color of prevention every Friday, visiting www.nchildabuseinvirginia.com to discover practical ways of helping to stop child neglect and abuse, and displaying a pinwheel during the month of April will serve as a positive visual reminder, all of those now, for our city to stay vigilant and that together we can prevent child abuse and neglect, and by doing so, keep children safe. Now therefore I, Trenae L. Tweedy, do hereby recognize the month of April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage the city of Lynchburg to wear blue, the official color of prevention, every Friday, display a blue pinwheel, and visit nchildabuseinvirginia.com to discover practical ways of helping to stop child neglect and abuse during the month of April. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. March 10, 2020. Thank you, Ms. Arrington.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, I stand before everyone, just representing our community. We know that we can't do it alone, and it's going to take everybody, businesses, nonprofits, schools, everybody. The city council support is tremendous, and we're going to move forward, and all the events that are going to take place during the month of April will be on that website, so if you want to check it out and support, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have one more recognition. We have a mayor's youth council member here, so I'll get Eliana Wang to stand up, please. Thank you so much. And I'm going to read a little bit so we can save the applause just one minute. Eliana Wang is a junior at Liberty Christian Academy. She is on the varsity tennis team and also enjoys hiking, swimming, and golf with her family. She plays the piano and the flute, and she really likes to watch different movies because she believes movies give people creativity and show people the possibility of the future. Eliana believes the biggest issue facing youth in the city of Lynchburg is the lack of ready access to health and fresh food. To combat this, she believes people should volunteer at different food organizations. Eliana worked at the Church and Salvation Army and now works at Food for Thought. She wants to go to either Boston or California for college and would like to major in business or international relations. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Thank you all for that moment. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into two sections, consent agenda and general business. The first section is the consent agenda, and this section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a consideration for approving the minutes?
Does that move? Second?
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. No further discussion. Cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is general business, and this section includes general items of new business. Next is number four, renaming of Tunnel Court and naming of Tunnel Court and City View Way on the campus of Liberty University. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Glasgow.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, Liberty University, Inc. is applying to name and rename the following private streets in the following manner. The unnamed curve will be connected to the existing Tunnel Court, and the entire section will be renamed as Fieldhouse Lane. The unnamed road in between what is currently Tunnel Court and City View Lane connects to Towns Court will be renamed Tunnel Court. And the currently unnamed segment between what is currently Tunnel Court and City View Lane will be renamed as City View Lane. This petition was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee on December 17, 2019, and by the Planning Commission on January 8, 2020, who had no comments. PDC reviewed this petition and recommended approval on February 11.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Glasgow, and I will turn to, yes?
As I see this, I should have asked our city attorney ahead of time. I'm just teaching a class there, and so I don't have a conflict of interest of this road, so I just...
No, I don't believe that approving voting on this would give you a benefit or...
Just wanted, just wanted to say that, so...
Okay. So you have a disclosure. Thank you.
Disclosure, which is...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hegelson, for that. That's fine. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Perrow, who is Chair of our Physical Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Physical Development Committee did review this. I'm very thankful the council member disclosed, because I'm not, he's not going to be the only person disclosing at some point tonight, so thank you for doing that, sir. But not regarding this issue. It's very straightforward. It is what it is. It's on campus, and this passed the, or is recommended by the Physical Development Committee without opposition. So Madam Mayor, I make that as a motion on behalf of the committee.
All right. Thank you very much. There's no second needed. Is there any further discussion? All right. Please cast your vote. Thank you very much, and the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution approving the naming of City Stadium, the baseball stadium portion, to Bank of the James Stadium. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Svercek.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. On February 23, 2016, city council approved a franchise agreement between the Lynchburg Baseball Corporation Corp. and the city of Lynchburg for the lease of City Stadium, Calvin Falwell Field. This agreement included a section regarding naming rights for the stadium. This section states the following. The city and the team may enter into an agreement to sell the naming rights to the baseball stadium portion of Lynchburg City Stadium, subject to approval of the Lynchburg City Council. The city and the team will share equally in any revenue resulting from the sale of such naming rights, and the city's portion of that revenue will be placed in the repair, replacement, and maintenance fund. Lynchburg Baseball Corp. and the Bank of the James have negotiated a sponsorship agreement with two items of note. Section 1.1 Stadium signage, the Bank of the James shall have naming rights to the stadium entrance, calling it Bank of the James Stadium, and the sponsorship fee in section 4.2, under the terms of the agreement, is for year one, beginning April 15, 2020, $50,000; years two through six, through 1-1-2025, an additional $50,000 for each of those years. The first year is separated out only because the cost for the initial signage and its installation shall be shared equally between the city and the club from that revenue. We ask that you approve this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Svercek. Yes, Councilmember Perrow.
Madam Mayor, I just need to make my disclosure now. I am a stockholder of the Bank of the James. That is a large group of many. I am one of that group of many, and therefore, it's my understanding that I should be able to vote on this without any sort of, it is permissible for me to vote on this item. In addition, I serve on the Bank of the James Advisory Commission, which is a, or advisory board for Lynchburg, which does have a paid stipend, however, it's well short of the statutory limit that we are required to disclose. Having said that, I will say that I am quite biased in this matter, and I'd like to go ahead and make the motion if that's all right.
All right.
Unless you've got, did you, something you want to say?
I just had one...
I'll let you.
Okay. Just one thing, as I read this and saw this, and I think back of what we had back in 1999, those of you who remember it, pretty embarrassing, quite frankly, I think. I mean, it was a bad thing. We had somebody, as is stated here, Merritt Hutchinson, that was going to do all these things, and things never really kind of panned out. So I, although I like exactly what is here and before us, I just think it may be a little, it may be wise for us to just kind of table this and let it marinate until our next meeting so we can, I think it's still plenty of time before, still plenty of time before the baseball season, but just, this is the first time probably anybody's heard of it. You know, I don't see, unless there's a problem with that, but...
Miss Svercek.
If it is, it shouldn't have come to us today, then it should have come to us a month ago, but hopefully it's not a problem.
This came to you as quickly as I could get it to you, given the information that I received from Lynchburg Baseball Corporation. I do want to mention, and I neglected to earlier, that Chris Jones, President and General Manager of the Lynchburg Hillcats, and Kevin Gill and Alan Puckett with the Bank of the James are here to answer any questions. I do believe, and Chris can talk more fully to this, that delaying approval will delay the fabrication of the sign and installation of the sign in time for opening day.
So today's the 10th. We have another meeting in two weeks. Is that, maybe that's, will that, Chris?
Can I, can I, can I tell you what? Can I ask, Councilmember Perrow was getting ready to make the motion, and so can I ask that we, would you like to go ahead with the Councilmember Hegelson's question?
I've got here.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a problem with waiting two weeks?
To get the sign made by opening day will be an issue, to get it made that quick and put up in that much of time. So yes.
And I don't like that, again, then. I mean, because it's, I mean, it's kind of putting people in a box. I mean, I recognize the importance of it. I think it's a great thing. And I'd love to be in favor of it, but this is a deliverative body that shouldn't just get things thrown up that says, hey, you got to decide by the end of the day. You know, especially when there's been, it's a previous history that wasn't good, and I don't think that previous history is going to be replicated by no means not insinuating that.
We made sure that we vetted it very well, and we had many, a couple of different other options that we shied away from for that reason alone.
Yeah. And so just very thankful, the Bank of the James is a fabulous company, Lynchburg Hillcats is a great organization. It's just the fact of, you know, when this is kind of the first time anybody hears about it, I mean, it's just, it's kind of good to let things marinate, so I just would suggest that we table it.
Thank you.
Can I just add something?
Ms. Svercek?
I just want to make it clear for those of you who weren't here roughly 20 years ago, when the naming rights were sold to, I believe, her name was Ann Merritt Hutchinson. The agreement was for 20 years, and Ms. Merritt Hutchinson suffered bankruptcy, and that is why that naming rights avenue did not continue.
And Councilmember Wright, followed by Councilmember Nelson, and, or Councilmember Perrow, would you like to go ahead and make the motion?
I would, if that's okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The motion has been made in second. Do you have further discussion?
I do, really quickly. Where I respect Councilmember Hegelson's concern, you know, I saw this on Thursday, was greatly excited about it, because this is a homegrown Lynchburg corporation. I remember when I, my next-door neighbor was a fellow named Todd Scruggs, who he and his friend Bob Chapman were, you know, tired of the big banks, and they both left Crest Star, and they're going to form their own bank, and I bought a share or two for $10 apiece, and I got my paper certificate from them that was much more official than I expected it to be, and that was, gee, how many years ago was that? Over 20 years ago? 21 years ago. And I am just thrilled as I can be to have a Lynchburg headquartered corporation having a naming opportunity on our stadium. And you see it in all the major cities, and it's a source of pride, and it's just important. And you're right, this Merritt Hutchinson, that was a disaster. That was an absolute disaster. But I have all full faith and credit in the Bank of the James and the vast majority of our Lynchburg corporations that would be behind something like this, and I hope this kicks off, I hope we can see other examples like this from other of our corporate leaders in the area. So thank you for the Bank of the James for doing this. I am so happy to be able to support this tonight, so thank you all so much, and I can't wait to see the sign.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments will be a variation on theme to Councilmember Perrow's. I do remember when Merritt Hutchinson made the contribution and the terms of that. I don't think she was a resident of Lynchburg. I don't think she had many, if any, roots in Lynchburg. I think she lived in Pennsylvania County or something, in that area. But Bank of the James is a, has demonstrated outstanding community citizenship since the bank was founded here and established here. It has the qualities of a good citizen. It certainly is, if you look at their financial reports, they are physically, financially solid and secure, and the amount of money that we're talking about under this agreement would not be easily compromised based on their standing. And as Councilmember Perrow said, I think it is exciting that we have, and I endorse thoroughly, public-private partnerships, especially when the city doesn't give up anything, it just gains another partner to help us with our expenses and overhead, and that's what this does, and that's why I support it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I should also disclose that I am a stockholder of the Bank of the James, and so I, but I feel that I can be fair and impartial in voting on this. I would, I'm excited to vote for it. I know that our economic development team has often talked about anchor institutions and involving large enterprises and institutions in the community and more of our civic affairs, and Bank of the James is such a partner, and so I think this is an exciting opportunity for the city to pursue. So thank you all very much for bringing this to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
I am not a stockholder, so just to make that clear. I appreciate what the Bank of the James has done for our community, a local institution that has been thriving over the past 20 years. So we're so thankful for them and their continuing investment in our community and various programs, so we're thankful for this investment in the stadium as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this project. My husband was one of the original founders, along with Bob Chapman and Todd Scruggs, but I can make this decision on a unbiased basis, but I've watched the bank flourish and grow over the years and all, what they have put into the community has just been phenomenal, so I would support this project.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting this project as I support Lynchburg Baseball, Hillcats, and the Bank of the James as a local community partner and investor. So thank you so much. And Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Perrow, I think made a really good point, and again, just to reiterate, my issue isn't with the bank, nor is it with the Hillcats. I mean, my issue is with the fact that I've seen lots of things that the city has pushed forward that have been kind of, in hindsight, was kind of a, something that they should have thought through a little bit more. So again, it's nothing against the bank and the Hillcats. I appreciate both of you, as I stated earlier. I think Councilmember Perrow, I'm just a little tentative when I see things that are pushed quickly by the city. There's been things that I think we could have done a lot better that we haven't, but that's, so when I see something quickly, I get a little suspect. But I think Councilmember Perrow hit the nail on the head about a good homegrown bank that is a homegrown anchor institution, and again, with the caveats that I disclosed, I do appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Dolan has a question from Ms. Svercek.
From Bonnie Svercek. So do you think this decision has been thought through?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I brought this to you as soon as Chris was able to bring an agreement to me. There is no intention at all to push anything through. That is never the intention of staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, and good luck. We'll look forward to seeing the sign. Thank you. Next is discussion of Tyreana Pleasant Valley Neighborhood Trash Service Fees. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Wodika.
You will remember on February 11, 2020, staff presented a number of recommended changes to the trash collection services in the city. A part of those recommendations were the, included the reduction of exemptions of free trash service throughout the city. However, one of those recommendations was to continue the Tyreana Pleasant Valley Neighborhood program to provide free trash collection services in that neighborhood. That recommendation was based on a city council decision in 1999 that was city council-approved to provide that free trash related to, as a result of the landfill operations in the area. At that meeting, city council asked staff to research the minutes from 1999 to determine if there was really any additional information that could be helpful in understanding council's intent at that time. After conducting that research, staff determined there's really very limited information from those meetings. It's not particularly clear as the way I read it from the minutes and the associated resolutions that whether or not this was the intent to provide the service for just a short period of time or in the long run. It does appear that this decision was made as a result to try to address a variety of concerns in the neighborhood related to the landfill, and council took this action in conjunction with authorizing a neighborhood plan for that area. I do want to note that in addition to free trash collection during this time, citizens of the Tyreana neighborhood bordering the landfill face did receive a number of other free services which ultimately have been eliminated over time. Those included house washing and pest control, and as the landfill has been closed, that's no longer been necessary. So our original recommendation, again, was to continue the service just because there was not, continue the free service because there was not sufficient clarity on whether or not this was, what the intent of council was, and we would just ask you to provide any more context for us that you would like, and if you would like to make a decision on that process, whether to continue that service for free or not.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wodika. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to call council's attention to the resolutions from 1999, and specifically R 99-045, and then there's subsection four. I think this is on page 45 of our packet, and it says, "The annual decal," so this is talking about the decal that would be provided to the residents of Tyreana. "The annual decal will allow for trash disposal at no cost until September 30, 1999. The city will also issue trash decals for the upcoming year, October 1, 1999 through September 30, 2000, to all homeowners, small businesses, and churches in the neighborhood." So it would sort of seem to suggest that this was really a benefit that was meant to last, you know, the remainder of 1999 and 2000, and that perhaps the city let the service continue until today, and I guess I'm curious if we have any clarifying information in that regard.
You know, the only thing we know from that is that we have continued to provide the service in that time period, and I don't know if, do you know if you have any thoughts? So I wish we could speak to that, but we just know that the service has been, continued to be provided for 20 years now.
Okay. And, sorry, go ahead. You know, at that time, when the city did that, the landfill was in operation, and we got a lot of complaints from the Tyre owner residents about the trash growing from the landfill, the traffic from the trash trucks, the odor... landfill, the traffic from the trash trucks, the odor. So, the city actually implemented a program for a number of years where homeowners who live next to the landfill could sell their properties to the city for the assessed value to try to buy those properties in a buffer zone. And at that time, it was also planned that the city would be expanding the landfill. Once the current, the landfill, the current cell closed, the city had acquired property to open, you know, another addition. That didn't happen because the city decided to join the Region 2000 Authority, not expand the landfill and take our refuse collection to Campbell County. So, I would say that things have significantly changed since council offered that incentive. The landfill has closed, so you no longer have the trash blowing, you no longer have the smell, you no longer have the traffic. And the landfill, the future operation of the landfill, the future expansion didn't take place. So, there has been a change in circumstances since the time this incentive was put in place.
Thank you, Ms., oh, go ahead.
One quick follow-up question, which is, to what extent have the neighbors been, and businesses here been notified that this is sort of up for discussion in front of city council? Perhaps the answer is, well, this is sort of the public notice, but I'm sort of curious if, if further outreach has, has occurred.
Right, so that's a good question. So, I think, so we've not done that. And I think frankly, probably would have been a little presumptuous for staff to go ahead and do that without any kind of direction from council because it was still up in the air at that time. So, again, you know, our recommendation was to continue the service for free. And if you'd like to change that, we can certainly do that.
Councilmember Wilder, followed by Councilmember Perro?
I'm reading over the prior documents and I see the point you were making in reference to that time period, but especially since the residents haven't been notified and also since the staff was continuing to recommend that they continue that service. I mean, I feel because there's no real closure as far as the items are continually, they're still buried there, is that correct?
Trash is still buried.
Yeah, so you never know what the, the long-term effects might be. So, I would recommend we continue, I mean, just, I would maybe continue to, or has it been moved?
So, maybe I, maybe I misunderstood the question. So, there, so I understand that there's trash in the landfill, but we're not burying new trash.
Yes, but it's still some stuff there. Yes, that was my point, I'm sorry. So, I recommend maybe to continue to provide that service for, for the residents there, especially since they have been notified and also just not knowing what other effects might be there from, on a long-term basis. At least it shows a good faith that we, we value you as a resident here because of the conditions, because of the conditions that were, whatever the conditions are as stated in the agreement, and we're gonna continue the service.
All right, you're making that as a motion?
I'm making that as a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll do a second for discussion. So, would you like to have further discussion on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to just hear other council members. And so, Councilmember Perro?
Okay.
And followed by Councilmember Wright, who had something else.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to offer a substitute motion that the landfill be closed when, excuse me, let me rephrase that. The landfill is already closed, that the deal with the Tyriana terminate and that, and that when the, when the new trash plan goes into effect, it applies for Tyriana also. And I understand, that, that's the motion. I understand that would be about the first of 2021, January 2021, which would give ample time for notification and so forth. And Madam Mayor, if I can make, oh, let me see if that gets a sub, a second.
All right, the substitute motion has gotten a second. And that is to, until 2021, when the new tax?
Implement with the, with the new, with the new trash implementation. And Madam Mayor, I just, the reason for that, I think, is a question of fairness. Everybody's paying in. I understand the concerns that Councilmember Wilder has brought up. That landfill is closed and inert at this point. It's still, it's gas that is, is being pulled off of and actually sold to Rock 10 to be used as fuel for their boilers. It's not like other landfills in the area that have an active presence and smell. I remember this discussion vividly, just following it in the paper. It was, certainly wasn't on council then. But, and it was about odor. It was really about odor. And that odor problem has, has been mitigated. And I think just in fairness across the board, that, that this should be, that it's time for this policy of sunset. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also remember, I don't, I wasn't engaged in the conversation, but I do remember the issue since I have clients who live next to the landfill. Dust was blowing, trash was blowing, there were horrible odors. And as suggested by what was said concerning the pest control, there were a lot of rodents and pests running all over the, the neighborhood. And so, those are the kind of things that happen when you have a landfill like that in your neighborhood. It's an imposition on the quality of life of those people. I had asked that we research the specific grounds upon which council made this specific exemption. And of course, we've read those minutes and they don't tell us anything. So, my justification is only speculation. It, it is not anything provable in the record. And I, obviously, at this point, the landfill is closed. So, the speculative facts that may have existed then and justified the special exemption don't exist anymore. And for that reason, I am an advocate of equal protection, that you treat everybody equally and you don't grant some special exemption or privilege to one group of citizens and not to another unless you can articulate a specific justification for the distinction. And given that the speculative reasons for the original exemption don't exist anymore and our record from the minutes don't show anything, I am inclined not to keep the exemption going. But I'm glad to have it, the transition be delayed because obviously it would be an abrupt change in their personal pocketbooks and budgets to suddenly impose that on them without further warning.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Further discussion? Councilmember Hegelsson?
And I was, was a little surprised by this motion that was here and the way it was phrased because I don't believe that we pick up trash for other small businesses, do we? I mean, if, if they have a, most of the time, it's a separate service.
Yeah, we, we have a number of small businesses that we?
Because the small businesses are out there that are, you know, there's one, the Department of Agriculture or something, there's a, and then there's another trucking company that doesn't look very small. I mean, there's lots of, unless they have just a can. And then a church, do we pick up for churches too?
Yes.
We do in other places? What, do the people, they buy a can or decal?
Right now, they would buy a tag.
Huh.
But, but at this point, you know, the church in that neighborhood would get a free tag if they were to call and everything.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out, I, I agree with Councilmember Nelson that, that there doesn't seem to be a really clear justification for why this neigh, why the neighborhood should continue to receive the exemption. And I guess the question that I would ask is, you know, if we, if we continue the exemption, does it exist in perpetuity? Is this something we're going to be, we're going to say we're going to provide forever? And then I think that should be a hard thing to, to justify. And another thing I would note is that, you know, we have another neighborhood that has a, that has a buried, you know, covered over landfill and that's the neighborhood of Darrington. And I think if we're going to, if the justification is that we're going to provide it to the Tyriana neighborhood on the justification that they have a landfill in their neighborhood, even if it's been covered over, then we would have to do the same for, out of fairness to the Darrington neighborhood. And I don't think that's a sustainable option either. So, I think provided, and it sounds as though we don't necessarily need to include this in the motion, that, you know, notification will go out to the neighbors and residents of, of the change. I would be comfortable supporting the substitute motion.
Yes, if I can clarify, we have a, we have a robust communications plan that we're building right now for all, all of these changes. So, it certainly will be a big part of that and, and we appreciate that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wodoka. Councilmember Nelson?
Just, just one comment to follow up to Councilmember Wright's points. We certainly do have a number of landfills in Lynchburg through the last century and a half. The Darrington neighborhood, as mentioned, the ravine behind Dunbar was a city landfill. Armstrong School area was a landfill. And just because you have a landfill doesn't mean that it, it has offensive qualities to it. I am familiar with landfill control. I have a client who operates landfills. And the landfills that are maintained now and closed now have very, very strict regulations. So, I don't think the Lynchburg landfill on the Concord Turnpike poses any further hardships or offenses to anybody around it. In fact, it's a, it's kind of a lovely little mountain with some very nice views. So, just point out, to, to give the exemption simply because there was a landfill close by is going to open up a lot of issues throughout the city.
Thank you. You also give some historical context and view of where they were placed. And so, to have that many placed in our urban areas and neighborhoods is interesting. Councilmember Hegelsson?
As Councilmember Nelson stated, it just reminded me of something that, you know, when we think about the trash policy, what we do with that, you go back there now, it is clean as a pin back there. You know, I think people put out trash and the city picks it up. And so, that's the way the city used to be back before the trash tag program was people would put out trash and the city picks it up rather than, you know, having monitors that come by and you had a little too much and this and that. And lots of it then blows and goes everywhere. Here's a place that's kind of actually a pilot where there wasn't an extra decal fee or an extra per bag or all this stuff. They put out their trash, the city picks it up and you go through there. It, it's really nice and clean. So, I think that could be a model back for the rest of the city, how it used to be before the, the trash tag system.
And Councilmember Wilder, I know has commented, I just want to follow up. That neighborhood has a lot of heavily engaged neighbors too, who take a lot of pride in their neighborhood. And so, they do a lot of personal volunteering and cleaning up of their own neighborhood. So, I just want to say that. They have, we have some lifetime people, residents, who live down there. So, just wanted to follow up with your note. Yes, sir, Councilmember Wilder?
Yes, thank you. I will not support the substitute motion. I can stand by the original motion. Also, I understand about the other landfills as well, but we didn't have an agreement with those other landfills. I was referring to this particular agreement that we have with the Tyriana area. And also, in addition to that, if I go that way constantly because I have a church member off the street there, and when I come from downtown, you have to pass the water filtration plant? And that's, that is not a pleasant smell. So, I'm sure they, yeah, you like it?
I do.
Okay, but it's just, I'm sure, we, they do a great, they do a great job. They do a great job. But again, it's still a little challenging. So, because of, because of that, still, I've, I stand by my original motion.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Perro and Nelson both have made some really good points and really due to the change in circumstance and this whole fairness agreement, I think, is really quite a valid statement. So, I would support Councilmember Turner, or Perro's motion.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, the motion has been made. In second it, please cast your vote. And the motion passes six to one. And I will also say that we have been, as city staff, down to Tyriana Pleasant Valley on the master plan, if I'm calling it correctly, the master plan for that neighborhood. So, there are potential plans out there for the landfill and I think it's going to be some great things happening down there. So, yeah.
It's now the main motion.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, yeah. So, now, for the main motion, because, yeah, the motion failed, so we substitute motion. Any further discussion?
Substitute motion has become the main motion, so now you vote to pass it.
Right. All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. Next is discussion of smart scale proposed, proposed projects. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Newland?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It is smart scale application time again for the VDOT. This year, they are doing a pre-application process, which the process opened on March the 2nd and it closes on March 31st. If the city is interested in submitting any applications, they have to submit a pre-application. So, staff is recommending two projects with VDOT recommendation on one of them. First one's Cantler's Mountain Road interchange with the Lynchburg Expressway. That's roughly a $40 million project. And the state has some state of good repair funding that they can add to it to help bring that cost down. This is all a smart scale project, which is all federal funds. It is not city funds involved in it. The second project is the one that we applied for last time and did not get, is the roundabout at Woods Ferry Road and CVCC Campus Drive. And if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Newland. This did go to the fiscal development committee and I will turn to the chair, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did review these items. Couple of points about the Cantler's Mountain Road interchange. Wow, that is a big price tag for the amount of work that's going to be done. But, you know, the, Mr. Newland has to project far out in the future because this would put it in the six-year plan. It could be six years out in the six-year plan plus the, all the escalation and the various requirements the state puts in, and the contingencies that have to go into place, right-of-way acquisition and so forth, really runs the number up. I understand that the ramp transitioning from Cantler's Mountain Road to northbound, to the expressway northbound is the highest point of crashes in Lynchburg. So, that is one of those no acceleration lane, lane ramps. This project will actually have acceleration lanes. And actually, it would change, it would have another stoplight, which I don't care for, but it would put stoplights on, on those intersections. So, you would turn at a stoplight very similarly to what you do on Kemper Street to get onto the expressway. I think it is a great opportunity to increase safety in that area. If anybody's ever tried to pull out of Harvard Street onto Woods Ferry Road, it is a challenge. And you can see it becomes more with the increased traffic on Woods Ferry Road, it becomes more and more so. This project is, or the proposed project is in keeping with the Woods Ferry Road master plan. I don't know if it's correctly phrased, a master plan or not, but the improvements plan maybe. And it requires a significant amount of real estate purchase. You'd think that the state would just give it to us, but evidently, we have to buy it from them. And that's what's running up the project cost and that. It is because of the traffic volume, it is a fairly large roundabout that would have to go there. But it is consistent with the plan. So, the committee thought that these were good projects to bring forward. It's all federal and state money and does not involve any sort of local match. And let's see if we can bring some of those federal and state dollars to work in Lynchburg. So, on behalf of the committee, I bring this a motion to approve to council.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelsson?
On this Woods Ferry Road one, so, $6.5 million for the roundabout, which I realize it's, that's a lot of money for making, you know, so that most of it is the purchase of the land or is it the building and engineering or is it, you can't?
It's, it's all of it. It's, it's, it's a lot of money for the roundabout. It's what the VDOT has using their estimate system.
So?
Roundabouts are built wherever they're all in that rough range that VDOT uses for smart scale.
So, if that's their estimate, and so with that, if we get, since it's federally funded, if we get the money, it wouldn't, the city has no match or is it a 2% match or?
No, smart scale is all 100% state and federal funds.
And, and so with that, now, if we were to try to help improve this interchange, because this interchange is, is very challenged, you know, especially when you're coming off of Harvard because people keep on coming. And then if people are trying to turn, you know, people can't take a left. So, if that doesn't happen, like a traffic light putting there, I mean, where you don't have to do all the acquisition and whatnot, what are traffic lights? About 250?
You'd still have to put in turn lanes and additional right-of-way would be needed for that. Would not be as much as a roundabout, but you'd still have to have additional right-of-way for turn lanes for the traffic signal. The traffic signal itself runs roughly 250,000.
About how much?
250,000.
250, that's what I suggested or asked. So, 250 for that and then, so why would you need additional right-of-way for, for making turning movements? Like, may I turn on red and?
Turn lanes, it's a, both, both roads are narrow right now. They're old county roads. They're 22 feet wide. You're going to have to widen the road for, to get to standards and then plus turn lanes. You're going to have to widen the road for, to get to standards and then plus turn lanes.
Okay, it'd be nice to see, you know, just a ballpark estimate of what that right-of-way acquisition is, you know, for kind of a turning signal.
All right, any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is consideration of adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 19 of the City Code to reflect changes associated with adoption of the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code 2015 Edition. And Chief Wormser will give us a brief summary of this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're here before you to discuss some needed changes for the Chapter 19, for Chapter 19 of the City Code. Most of these changes are relative to the addition of the statewide fire prevention code that we currently are using, which is the 2015 edition. We have been using the 2012 edition up until this point. So we're requesting council to adopt the amendments as they are written and as have been indicated in your packet. Additionally, one of the other large changes you'll notice is the removal of pumping water from the basements. We no longer provide that service and typically we'll refer that to an outside contractor of somebody's, of a citizen's choosing.
All right.
And with that, I'll have to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Is there any further questions for Chief Wormser? Oh, Councilmember Wright.
No questions, just would move we approve the changes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. If not, yes.
I do have a question. That's all right. I'm a little concerned about this no longer removing the water from basements. And I guess this question is directed towards Captain Goode. Captain Goode, how is it that you're going to maintain your fitness standard since you can't be lifting five-gallon buckets full of water out of the refrigerator, out of basements anymore?
We took apart with the local.
It's all right, I'm just commenting on Captain Goode's physique and I was teasing him earlier tonight that I was going to ask him a question and put him on the spot a little bit. Captain Goode and I went to EC Glass together, know each other a long time. And so I appreciate what you guys do, all of you, especially in the Fire Marshal's Office and keeping our buildings straight. But I can just imagine Captain Goode lifting five-gallon buckets at a time and his arms getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely, thank you.
I imagine you had a pumping system kind of thing, right?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, he was pumping, instead of pumping iron, he's pumping.
In years past, in years past, we certainly had portable pumps that we would bring to a resident's home. But as times have changed and call volume has increased and some of the other challenges that we have, we just no longer provide that service. And frankly, it doesn't happen nearly as often as it used to.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion.
And just, I guess with it, so now, for example, if the city has a sewer or a water problem that has it, the Water Resource Department, I imagine, would be one that would come and pump that out of basements, right?
Yeah, our citizens always come first. And we've certainly had, you know, occasions last year when we had some flooding issues and rains where citizens did call us because they had flooded basements. And we obviously will do everything we can to help them mitigate their situation because they are always our top priority.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions, discussion, please? Yep, we're good. Please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And with that, there's no further.
Madam Mayor, if I could just bring this up, I'm sorry, this is a roll call item. Ben Blanks approached me at the end of the meeting and wanted me to remind council and anybody that's listening that there's a public hearing on the proposed GLTC fare increase, April 1st, 4:00 PM. I think that's April 1st. I may want to verify with the, with our marketing department, the GLTC Transfer Center, which is on the second floor there at 800 Kemper Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to share.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are, Ms. Verchek, I'm sorry.
I'm reminded that you do have a council meeting next week at 4:00, 4:00 till roughly 6:00 to continue your discussion on the budget.
All right, we will be meeting almost weekly, if not weekly, yes, for the budget. Thank you. And this meeting is adjourned.